Good morning. Thank you to my colleagues for joining our first hearing of the Committee of the Whole. Thank you to Council Services and my staff for the work that went into this hearing. Let me first start by recognizing my colleagues that are here. Thank you to Councilman Jermaine Jones, Councilmember Felicia Porter, Councilmember Odette Ramos, Councilmember Ryan Dorsey, Councilmember Paris Gray, Councilmember Zach Blanchard, and Councilmember Mark Parker. I also want to recognize members of the administration that are here today as well. I see Acting Director of the Department of Housing -- sorry, the Acting Director of the Department of Human Resources, Tanya Brinkley. I see Lindsey Wilks. I see Director Laura Larson. I believe Nina Themelis is on her way as well. I also see Gabriel Sikowitz from Finance. Good to see you, Gabe. Just a little bit of housekeeping before we begin. The administration will have 10 minutes to present after I open. Then each of my colleagues will ask questions of the administration. I will recognize each colleague when it is your turn to speak, and I cordially request each of you to be efficient with your questions. Today, we will examine overtime and vacancies across city agencies. As we head into budget season, this conversation will help improve how we track and spend taxpayer dollars. Our work is guided by two key principles: Residents deserve the highest level of city services, and they also deserve truth in budgeting when we spend their tax dollars. I'd like to thank Director Larson and her team for providing detailed data sets to the council in advance of today's hearing. Thank you to City Administrator Leach for your commitment, as well as Mayor Scott, to making our agencies more accountable to the residents we serve. The City Council and the administration share the goal of ensuring responsible stewardship of the city's fiscal health, and I appreciate our partnership. Let me summarize what we saw when we analyzed the data made available to the council. And I want to emphasize at the outset that we only analyzed a subset of positions and overtime funded by the General Fund. First, the city has been budgeting for hundreds of positions that have been vacant for at least 18 months, and in some cases, far longer, while annually incurring well over $100 million in overtime expenses. At the same time, the city continues to create and fill new positions. As of this month, for example, there are 530 positions just in agencies that report directly to the administration that have been vacant for at least 18 months, including 328 positions in the Fire and Police Departments. And we budgeted $33 million, over $33 million, for these significantly aged positions. We can call these positions phantom positions because they exist on paper but are apparently unlikely to be filled by real people. Overtime spending is still out of control in some of our agencies. In calendar year 2023, the city incurred approximately $114 million in overtime from the General Fund at agencies reporting directly to the administration. In calendar year 2024, overtime across these agencies grew to approximately $139 million. And if current spending levels continue, the city could be on track to spend somewhere between $115 and $150 million on overtime again this year. Here's the problem: By budgeting for these vacant positions, the city accounts for tens of millions of dollars that are eventually redirected to other purposes, such as overtime or paying contractors without prior approval by the council. And if an agency overspends their approved budget, as has happened repeatedly in recent years, the council is requested to pass large supplemental budgets to cover tens of millions of dollars in expenses already incurred by the city without prior council approval. This undermines the integrity of the city's budget process. The other problem we've identified is that we are not recruiting and retaining enough workers. We are paying out excessive overtime while some city services are still struggling. As such, while this hearing is about improving fiscal management, it is also about addressing deficiencies within our human resources management practices. We understand that many factors contribute to our HR challenges, including salaries that in some cases are not aligned with the market, and hiring procedures that need to be improved. Nonetheless, we should be realistic. We should be realistically budgeting for the actual expenses we expect to incur, including overtime. We should not budget for positions that are not going to be filled. We should have controls in place that prevent agencies from exceeding their approved budgets without first seeking and receiving additional appropriations approved by the City Council. And we should not be looking to raise fines and fees on the backs of residents while we are budgeting millions of dollars for expenditures that we are actually not going to make. We look forward to drilling into these issues in more detail today. And again, I thank everyone for joining us. I want to appreciate the partnership with Director Larson, City Administrator Leach, and Mayor Scott, and I look forward to hearing from you all today. And with that, I am going to pass it off to Director Larson for her presentation. And I do, before doing that, want to recognize Councilmember Tony Glover, who has joined us, and Councilmember Mark Conway, who has joined us as well.
Awesome. Good morning, Mr. Council President, members of the City Council. I'm Laura Larson, the city's Budget Director. Thank you very much for the opportunity to join you today to discuss these very important data sets. I believe my team is working on getting the slides up, but in the interest of time, I'll start to work through our content.
Agreed.
So as requested, we provided data regarding overtime usage and vacancies going back multiple fiscal years. So what I'd like to do is first talk about overtime data, and then I'll pivot and talk about what we're seeing in terms of vacancies. So in terms of the data that we pulled for you regarding overtime, we are leveraging information from the city's enterprise-wide financial system, which is called Workday. The data that we pulled from the system for overtime goes back to the transition to Workday for financials, which took place of August 2022 through March of 2025. One of the things that's important to note in this data set is that it's organized by calendar year rather than fiscal year, and because of that, the data that you're seeing for both calendar year '22 and '25 are partial-year data. And so as we analyze this data, I'm going to focus on the comparisons that we see between calendar year '23 and '24, because those are our two years of complete data in this data set. What we saw is that if we look at the comparisons between calendar year '23 and '24, General Fund overtime was up by about 15.9%, while overtime on other funds, such as our enterprise funds, like the Water Fund, the Wastewater Fund, or any grants, those overtime hours were up by 14.3%. I want to note that as you hear me talk about overtime, I'm leaning into talking about hours versus dollars. And the reason why hours are more important when looking at overtime versus dollars is because hours gives us the best apples-to-apples comparison. We have to remember that overtime increases as wages increase. And so if we think about in the instance of the Fire Department, the Fire Union has had multiple years of contract increases that would also be driving the increase. So with that, let's look more specifically in terms of where we're seeing overtime utilization by agencies. So we see that overtime from six city agencies accounts for 95% of the city's total overtime spending. Positions in these six agencies account for 68% of the total positions in our workforce. So, Gabe, if you go to the next slide. The bar chart up here at the top is showing the distribution by calendar year for each one of those agencies in terms of that overtime utilization. And we can see, based off of this information, that the Police Department represents about 35% of our overtime usage, the Fire Department represents about 25%, and Public Works represents about 19%. What we're seeing if that we look at the overtime hours for calendar year '25 compared to calendar year '24, a number of these agencies in the top six are on pace to generate either overtime utilization at the same level as fiscal, as calendar year '24, or less. So notably, the Department of Recreation and Parks, their first quarter overtime hours were 12% of what we, of the trends that we had seen in calendar year '24. So overtime utilization in that agency is down year over year. Whereas if we look at the Department of General Services, their overtime utilization is outpacing where they were in calendar year '24, and they've utilized 35% of the hours that we saw in fiscal '24. The one thing I will note as we try to pull trends out of this data is that overtime in a number of these agencies, specifically Transportation, Wreck and Parks, Public Works, and DGS, is very seasonal. So if we think about the Department of Transportation, much of their, much of their snow and ice response is done through overtime. And so if you look at their overtime hours in the first quarter of a calendar year, they're going to be outpacing what we would expect to see for the rest of the fiscal year, just based off of the nature of how that particular operation is staffed. So if we go to the next slide, we'll dig a little deeper into where this overtime is happening within these agencies. So overtime from 10 services accounts for 70% of citywide overtime. You can see that three of those services are in the Police Department, two are in the Fire Department, four are in Public Works, and one is in Transportation. In most cases, when we look at these services, the overtime utilization is driven in some part by daily minimum staffing requirements that are inherent in providing these services. For example, Police Patrol, which represents about 20% of our overtime utilization, much of that overtime is being driven by callback overtime associated with achieving the shift constants needed in order to staff patrol. Next up, I'd like to talk about what we're seeing specifically in the Department of Public Works. So one of the things to know about the Department of Public Works is that their overtime includes what we, what we see in the Bureau of Solid Waste, as well as the Water and the Wastewater bureaus. And so if we look at their trends between calendar year '23 and '24, their General Fund overtime utilization is actually down by about 5% as the department has leaned into increasing its staffing levels, while overtime utilization in the Water and the Wastewater Funds is actually up by 2%. So you can see, looking at the table on this chart, in terms of what that breaks out by the different fund sources. So most overtime in the Department of Public Works is funded by the city's water utility. The next largest share would be the General Fund, and then finally, the Wastewater Fund. One last slide on overtime before we shift gears to vacancies. I do just want to note that in terms of how we approach the overtime -- Gabe, can you advance to the next slide, please? We do, individual agency budgets do include funding for overtime, and it really depends on the driver behind overtime. So in some cases, service levels will drive inherent overtime, and overtime is just built into the staffing model of a particular service. I mentioned snow removal. Other examples would be holiday trash removal. So for example, if we have a city holiday on Monday, we know that there's going to be a Saturday collection day that is going to be staffed through overtime. What agencies will do for those types of items is they will build in overtime assumptions into what they're budgeting, because that is predictable overtime that they, they know that they can plan on. What we see that is unbudgeted overtime is what is coming from vacancies throughout various city agencies. This is most predominant in the Fire and Police Departments, where they have large vacancies, where there's a long window, a long runway, even after you hire someone before they can actually be folded into the shift model. What those agencies are doing is they are reallocating funds within their budget to take funding from vacant positions until they can get filled in order to fund overtime so that they can meet their staffing level constants. When we look at the fiscal '26 budget, there's $89.5 million budgeted for overtime, $68.4 million of that is budgeted in the city's General Fund. So switching gears and talking a little bit about vacancies. So as of May, there were 20, just over 2,700 vacant positions in the city. 1,600 of those were in the General Fund, 1,100 of those were in various other funds. 63% of those vacancies have been vacant for less than 18 months. So that really represents just sort of the regular churn and turnover that we see within various city agencies. Any vacancy that you see as listed as pre-Workday, that would be vacant going back to the transition to Workday, which happened in August of 2022. Next up, we can look at these vacancies and drill down in a little bit more detail specifically by agency. And so what we see, similar to overtime, there's a handful of agencies that represent the largest share of these vacancies. So there are five agencies that account for 73% of citywide vacancies. You can see that Police and Public Works are the, are the largest two, followed by Health, Transportation, and Fire. One of the things I'd like to note regarding Health and Public Works is that the bulk of their vacant positions are in their non-General Fund sources. So in the case of the Health Department, 59% of their vacancies are funded by various grants, and in the case of the Department of Public Works, 91% of their vacant positions are funded by the various utilities. And then finally, just a note in terms of new positions. So in the fiscal '26 budget that was presented to you, there are 126 positions that have been added based off of mid-year actions approved since the adoption of the '25 budget, and there are 84 positions that are recommended for funding in next year's budget that are brand-new. When we look at those mid-year actions, most of the position creation is coming from ongoing efforts around police civilianization. That's where we're creating civilian positions with a goal of taking sworn staff who are doing something today and redeploying them back into a vacancy within the department. There's also been additional positions allocated for the city's Housing Department to support the vacant strategy, additional grant-funded positions within the library, and new positions to support the city's opioid restitution work. When we look at fiscal '26, the bulk of the new positions that you're seeing that are recommended are part of the agency reallocating funding as part of their requested budget. So we see 21 new positions in the city's Health Department that are funded by the Opioid Restitution Fund, an additional batch of civilianization positions within the Police Department, and six positions within B-SIT for the newly created municipal ID program. This data set does not include instances where agencies are restoring funding for previously unfunded PINS. The best example of that would be in the state's Attorney's Budget, where they reallocated funding to create over 20, to refund over 20 previously frozen positions. This also doesn't include instances where there's been funding but no PINS added to the budget. That would be the case, for example, of in the Department of Public Works, where we have 15 new crews that are anticipated to start midway through fiscal '26. Those positions will still get created through, outside of the budget process, through BOE approval. So with that, I will pause and take any additional questions from you all.
Thank you, Director Larson, and thank you again for the data that you provided in advance of the hearing to the council. So as I discussed in my opening statement, we analyzed overtime and vacancy data that you all provided and found that as of May 2025, there are more than 500 positions within city agencies that report directly to the administration that have been vacant for at least 18 months. I know there's many ways to slice the data on vacancies, but I want to talk specifically about this issue in some detail. Director, overall, there are more than 1,500 vacant positions in city agencies funded by the General Fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
And again, I know we were looking just at the positions within agencies that report to the administration. As I've said, out of that total and based on our analysis across the city, we found more than 500 positions in agencies that report to the administration that are funded from the General Fund and that have been vacant for at least 18 months. These are what I'm calling phantom positions, as we've budgeted approximately $33 million for these positions. Is that also correct?
That's correct. So there are 554 General Fund positions that have been vacant for more than 18 months. Within that 554, 226 of those are within the Fire and Police Departments, so that's primarily police officers and paramedics.
Now, assuming that these positions remain vacant, at the end of the fiscal year, will that $33 million be left in the General Fund because we didn't pay the salaries for those positions? Or where will that funding be at the end of the year?
So in the, because 50% of those vacancies sit within Police and Fire, most of that savings is being reallocated to cover overtime costs. And the reason for that is because as the vacancy trends have increased in both of those departments, the service levels did not, did not decrease. And so what that meant is that in order to provide the same level of service, the Police Commissioner and the Fire Chief were filling those shifts through different overtime mechanisms. What I will say is that in the case of both, in the case of Fire, we saw vacancies dramatically increase during the COVID pandemic when recruitment was paused. If we look specifically at where Fire has been able to make progress over the last fiscal '25, they've been able to, we are overhired currently on firefighters. Where we continue to have vacancies is for paramedics. And so really what happened there was we got behind in terms of holding those recruitment classes, and so the department had to get above water in terms of their having recruitment efforts outpace departures from the department. In the case of the Police Department, what we have seen, even in my two years as being Budget Director, the number of vacant police officers has continued to increase year over year. What we saw in fiscal '23 is that, based off the vacancy levels within the department, they were able to cover their overtime costs based off of the vacancy savings. It was, it was a wash. What we saw in fiscal '24 was that, that the overtime spending had outpaced the savings that we were realizing from vacant positions. And so one of the things that we have seen in the Police Department throughout fiscal '25, through the leadership of the administration and partnership with the Police Commissioner, there's been a new focus on police officer hiring. And so we actually have some of the largest classes currently in our police academy that are seeking to drive down the overall number of vacancies within that department. The issue with both Police and Fire is the long windows of time between when, when a new hire enters the academy until when they are ready to be deployed and incorporated into the shift model.
Understood. And so just to put it in very plain English, the expectation is that the long-term, what I call phantom, unfunded, or funded positions that are realistically not, in many cases, going to be hired, that that money is then washed within the agency to cover overtime or other expenses?
Correct. The only way you would see true savings from these vacant positions is if Police and Fire scaled back their level of service.
How does the city control how the funding appropriated for long-term vacant positions is actually used? And to be clear, the administration decides how to redirect it? How do you all make those decisions?
So first and foremost, our goal in all of the city agencies is to staff service levels with regular time, wherever possible. Now, of course, there's notable examples where overtime is how we staff something. Sunday hours at libraries are staffed through overtime. But our goal is that every city service that has a daily minimum staffing requirement, that they have sufficient staffing levels in order to meet that with limited use on overtime resources. So in terms of how this gets approached between these departments and the administration, you know, when agency expenditures are monitored by my team on a quarterly basis, we flag for the administration and for you all where there are agencies that are trending over in terms of their spending, and then we work with those agencies to identify different strategies that can be put in place to try to control spending. What we have seen, I would say, in the case of Police and Fire, is that, you know, it, because of the vacancy levels being what they are, it's been difficult in order to drive down spending to a level that would get us back to both of those agencies staying within the, within their allocated amount in the budget. But our, we continue to fund those positions in the budget because we want to get them filled, because when we can fill the positions, we're able to provide the service for a more cost-effective rate for our residents, and it's also a better way to provide service. Like, none of us want a police officer responding to our home in the midst of an emergency after that officer has been burned out on hours and hours of overtime. So it is our collective goal to try to get these staffing levels up. We continue to fund the PINs so that they're available, so that the departments can continue to recruit.
No, definitely appreciate that. I think the concern is we're about to head into budget negotiation, and we're going to conclude with a budget that the administration and the City Council agree on. And I think what the troubling issue that this data has raised is that that budget is not going to actually represent what is then going to happen for the next year. And so to me, when I think about truth in budgeting and being really honest with the residents that we all represent, I think it is incredibly important that we both constrain out-of-the-box overtime spending and just be honest about it. Like, just be honest with the public that this is what it is going to take for Police, for Fire, to accomplish their mission, instead of them essentially spending a blank check and going over what we allocate as their budget into the future. And that is something that I know this council would very much like to work with you and the administration on, and I just, for this hearing, want to get a commitment that that is something that you all would be interested in partnering with us on.
Certainly. You know, the administration, at the direction of the City Administrator, continue to dig into this in more and more detail. I don't, you know, I don't want to commit on behalf of the City Administrator, but I believe that the partnership that we have in digging into these issues will continue as we go into fiscal '26. I think one of the things that I want to highlight on is that in the '26 budget, we are doing things to try to combat some of these issues. So if we take the Fire Department, for example, as I mentioned, you know, they've been sort of one of our, our chronic deficit agencies over the last couple of years. There's a couple of things in fiscal, the fiscal '26 budget that are really focused on driving down their overtime. Number one, we're going into fiscal '26 essentially overhired with firefighters. And so, and that's the first time that we've been at that staffing level for firefighters since I've been here. And so what we're going, what the Chief will be able to talk with you next week at his budget hearing about how he's thinking about allocating those additional firefighters to help control overtime spending on the EMS side where we have a lot of vacant paramedics. The other thing that's been contributing to the deficit in the Fire Department is starting during COVID, we brought onboard contractual EMS services to help supplement our city ambulances. And in the '26 budget, we're utilizing, that, that expense has largely been unbudgeted after COVID aid expired. And so in fiscal '26, we're going to be deploying opioid restitution funds to support those contracted ambulance services, which which will drive down their deficit next year as they work to stabilize their staffing. Also, in the police department, I believe that we will start to see some relief as we look, as we look to the future. Because as I mentioned, they have some of the largest recruit classes in place that we have seen in recent years. A lot of that has been supported through some of the work that's coming out of the city's innovation team in terms of partnering with the police commissioner to look at where there were barriers to our recruitment effort for officers so that we can start to reverse the trend in terms of the growing number of vacant officer positions.
Understood. And again, appreciate the commitment to working with the council to address some of these issues. With that, I'm going to go to Councilmember Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Morning, Director. How you doing?
Good. How are you today?
Good. I have a couple of prepared questions. I do want to ask a couple of clarifying things real quick. On page, what was it? Well, the overtime trends by agency?
Yes.
You noted the overtime from six agencies accounts, accounts for 90%, 95% of citywide overtime and that positions from these agencies account for 68% of the overall position count. Does that? I feel like there's a difference between position count and filled positions. I mean, that's kind of the heart of this. I, I'm curious what that 68% looks like if we're looking only at filled positions, maybe?
I was looking at budgeted pins. I, I would be happy to, would you like to see that data based off of?
I'd be interested in the 68 and the 35% that are both cited on this page. Because it seems like there's a relationship of disparity between like the 95% of overtime is driven by agencies with only 68% of the positions. We'd be talking about something different if we're talking about 95% with 95%, right? And similarly, 65, 60% from 35. You know, I'm interested to know what that looks like if we're maybe talking about filled positions.
I will say, I was, I was working with that data a little bit in, in preparation for the hearing. And the, the one classification that had the one-for-one relationship was police officers. So that was the highest, you know, the classification with the highest overtime hours. And it was the classification with the highest number of vacant positions. But I, I would be happy to provide additional follow-up on that.
Great. One other, before I get to my kind of prepared thoughts here. As we're talking about these positions that are of, that have been vacant the longest time, for example, what did I just note here? Police has 718 vacancies, but 278 of those have been vacant for 18 months or more. It would seem to me to be more kind of thoughtful. I mean, when we're talking about keeping positions open essentially in the hope that we can fill them, you know? What, like, we're not going to have 500 new officers coming in, like, right? In the hope that they fill, like, it would, we can keep plenty of hope alive.
Certainly.
If we even limit ourselves to just the ones that are 18 months or less vacant, right? There's 278 positions that if we are keeping this money in these positions available for the, essentially for the expectation that we will spend this money on overtime, why not close out those positions and put that money into the dedicated budgeted 80-some million that we have set aside for overtime already? I think to me, that would be a more kind of like honest and reflective way of showing where we realistically are.
Yeah.
And to me, that kind of makes all the more this point that I want to make. Because like, as if it's not enough to have a dedicated overtime fund and have this like huge number of positions kept open specifically for taking their money for overtime, we then exceed that overtime. In recent years, the city council has essentially been forced to approve supplemental appropriations to pay for expenditures that agencies have made above the amounts appropriated to them in adopted budgets and without first receiving approval from the city council. I don't even know how that happens. For example, last year, the city council was asked to approve a year-end supplemental in the amount of $37.3 million to balance the fiscal year '23 budget. And then earlier this year, we were asked to approve a year-end supplemental in the amount of $67.8 million to cover overspending at several agencies incurred during FY '24. Can you explain what formal systematic fiscal controls are in place to prevent agencies from overspending their budgets?
Yes. So I, I guess first on the issue of the, your comment regarding the police department staffing and reallocating funding from those vacancies to overtime. I think one of the things that we have to note is that that number's increased dramatically in the last, you know, from 2022 to, to where we pulled this data in May. And so part of this is a, a new trend, you know, a dramatic fast uptick in the police department in terms of the commissioner trying to figure out how to sort of stabilize staffing. What I would say is I would encourage that question during the police department hearing in terms of their recruitment strategy and philosophy in terms of trying to get those pins filled versus overtime utilization. In terms of budgetary controls for city agencies, you know, we are in a new framework that the city did compare, after we implemented Workday compared to what the controls looked like before to what they look like now. I will say that part of the way that historically we did a lot of controlling around expenditures where there were really tight checks from my office because we were included in every single workflow, whether you were buying a pencil or whether you were buying 10 pieces of equipment. We were reviewing the expenditure to ensure that it was in line with what you had budgeted. There have been some hiccups in terms of how those workflows are functioning in Workday. Initially, a lot of things were decentralized out to agencies for them to manage these issues. We've seen that some of that hasn't been very successful. And so over the last year, I've been working with the finance director, the HR director to re-insert harder budget checks into our overall system to prevent some of this overspending proactively. Additionally, we monitor this information on a quarterly basis. We want to try to catch these trends in the first quarter, if possible. Because if we're catching a trend that an agency is going over in the third quarter, you, if you think about it, we complete our third quarter at the end of April. That really only gives you two months to pivot and to adjust to a big surprise. And so what we're doing is, as we see that an agency is trending over through our quarterly projection process, working with them earlier in the fiscal year to understand what controls are in place so that we can reverse any sort of spending trends to bring them back in a position where they can stay within budget.
So if I understand, we're basically sort of putting the reins or like the burden of placing controls in their hands, but then having to go back behind them and like check their work?
I don't know if I understand your question. So what was happening, so when we implemented Workday, a lot of the budget checks that were previously within our financial systems, those had gotten instead, when before they were very centralized in BBMR, they were, there were decisions made as part of the implementation of that tool to decentralize some of those checks to other parts of the organization. And what we saw during that period is that when those centralized budget checks were removed, we ran into some of these issues. And so over the course of fiscal '25, I've been working to move us back to a place where we have greater central review of those items. And so what that means is additional review of positions that are being filled to ensure that they're being filled, that they're being slotted in the same way that they were funded in the budget. If somebody's trying to fill a position that's not funded, ensuring that they have a way to offset that on a recurring basis to cover that cost. The other thing that we're doing is additional scrutiny and review of non-personnel expenditures to ensure and to reduce any sort of unbudgeted expenditures. And then the, the final piece is additional level of scrutiny and review of contracts that are going before the Board of Estimates to ensure that those contracts are in line with what agencies have budgeted.
My concern is that, this is about truth in budgeting.
Understood.
We pass a budget for these agencies that allocates their portion to them and somebody else's proportion to somebody else. And then this agency just does whatever they feel like doing and that ends up coming on the back of somebody else. And that's not what we approved.
Exactly.
That's like a dishonest, like bad faith way of operating after the fact, after we have been given our, you know, and then we're asked to just say, "Okay, you guys did whatever you wanted after we gave our approval to something else." That's not truth and good faith operation in the budget process. Are there consequences for agencies that overspend their budgets?
So management of the individual budgets is, is a responsibility of every agency director. And the accountability piece of that is managed through the city administrator with those individual directors.
I guess we'll have to ask the, the city administrator then. We're just at a critical point to the city and we have to have fiscal integrity. Our budgets have to mean what they say. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. I'm going to turn and recognize Councilman Bullock is here as well as Councilwoman McCray. Councilwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Director, according to the information that we analyzed on our team from the data that was provided by the administration, in calendar year 2023, the agencies reporting directly to the administration and funded by the general fund incurred approximately $114 million in overtime. And overtime for those same agencies rose to approximately $139 million in calendar year 2024. And obviously, those numbers are for 2023 and 2024. And now I just want to pivot to talk about fiscal year 2025, which to be clear, it does run from July the 1st to July the 3rd, excuse me, June the 30th. So I'm going to move my questions to that portion. My first question is how much was budgeted for overtime in fiscal year 2025?
So the, the budget that's before you for fiscal '26, the overtime budget is $89.5 million. If you give me one moment, I can pull the FY '25 number. So in fiscal '25, that number was $76.7 million across all funds.
Director Larson, how much are you expecting that the city spends in overtime for all of fiscal year 2025, knowing that what was budgeted? Did you say $76.7 million?
That's what is currently budgeted across all funds. Our quarterly forecasting is focused on the general fund. Ben, would you be able to look at our third quarter numbers and share that projected number? Just while Ben is bringing that up, I, I can just share from the overall trends that we are seeing in fiscal '25, that the, the bulk of the overtime utilization that we're seeing in the current fiscal year continues to be within the, the fire and the police departments. It would be a continuation of the, of the prior trend. What are those two numbers combined? So the, the projected amount for calendar year, or for fiscal year '25 is a, we're projecting approximately $144 million in terms of overtime spending against that, against the, the budgeted amount. And of that, approximately $100 million was related to sworn overtime.
So do you expect at the end of fiscal year 2025 that the council is going to be coming back and that we'll need to appropriate additional money to cover overtime that our agencies have spent?
So based off of our third quarter projections, the general fund overall was projecting to have about an $8 million deficit revenue versus expenditure. I do anticipate we, there, we will be coming forward to the council with supplementals for agencies that are trending over.
And this would tie into what, to previous line of questions from another council member. How much are we expecting the supplemental appropriations to be to cover the overtime costs?
We are currently working on sizing the supplementals for fiscal '25. Our goal is, we're updating our third quarter projections to capture any changes in trends that we may have seen since the third quarter ended on March 31st. Our goal is to have the supplemental package ready to take to the Board of Estimates in the middle of July so that we can bring the supplemental package to you all following BOE approval. So either, depending on council meetings, either late July or early August.
So just based off of what you stated was budgeted and where we're at right now, it could be upwards of, it could be $70 million that we're going to be have to, that we're going to be asked to approve?
So at the, at the third quarter, the, like I said, the overall projection was approximately an $8 million deficit. Embedded in that, I believe the expenditure deficit as part of that was approximately $45 million. Our city charter requires that city agencies end the year within budget. So typically, the supplementals that we bring before you are to, are to resolve deficits from any agency that went over. So what we're doing right now is we are reviewing agencies that are trending over, working with them to identify, you know, what, what measures they can put in place over, you know, we've been working with them. you know, we've been working with them for the last six weeks, even prior into March. I forget exactly when the city administrator's guidance went into effect. I believe it was in March. We've been working with these agencies to look at different measures to control their spending, and we're continuing to work with them to ensure, you know, any costs that are being charged to the general fund, if they can be transferred to other sources, or to put in other broader cost control mechanisms before we finalize the final amount of the supplemental. Because our goal is to work with them to drive down their costs as much as possible.
And this is going to lead back to previous comments and concerns. As we're going into these budget hearings, the city council cannot be expected to write blank checks to our agencies to do whatever they want to, and then we have to come and approve the stuff on the back end. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Yes, first, I just want to thank you for coming in and supplying us with all this information. I want to shift over to some of the HR policies. Because in order to, you know, reduce vacancies and overtime, one of the things we have to do is hire more folks. And I'd love to see more and more city residents hired and working for, you know, our beautiful city. But however, in December 2024, the city's auditor did an audit on the city's hiring processes in which they released, I quote, in which they found that, I quote, "The city does not have the ability to track and monitor the effectiveness and efficient, the effectiveness and efficiency of hiring, of their hiring process, and identify bottlenecks that are hindering hiring tasks to be completed in an efficient manner." The auditor also evaluated five city agencies and found that most of them lack written policies that got their hiring processes. In fact, as a councilperson, I've watched, you know, city residents try to get hired, and it's taken over six months in order for them to be hired. And I've watched the frustration and them sometimes even give up, just because they're hearing different things sometimes. Which leads me to my question. I know agencies are working hard to implement the recommendations made by the auditor, and I applaud their efforts. But what are the three most important actions we need to take right now to ensure that we can hire people with the right skill set more effectively?
And we are joined by interim Director Brinkley, and so I will defer that, those, that response to the HR team.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council President, and your absence, members, council members. So, DHR has done a lot since the audit has come out in December. One of the things that came out was that we were unable to track the bottlenecks that you mentioned, because the workday, there were probably a large amount of that that wasn't turned on or made mandatory, such as dates of interviews, such as when something was, background checks were completed. That information wasn't required in the hiring process, so we couldn't tell if that was part of the bottleneck. As of March the 28th, those have been turned on, and the agencies have been trained on that, so that when they're going through the process, they can no longer skip those actions. And so, we're looking to start doing reporting on that, so that we can really start telling which part of the recruitment process is being bottlenecked. Some of the things that we've done to make sure that we're able to start recruiting is looking and having discussions about the minimum qualifications and what they look like for that position, making sure that those screening questionnaires are in the recruitment process, and making sure that once that position closes, that we're effectively as quickly as we can turning those information over to the agencies.
Got you. Back to kind of my question, which is like, what would you say are the three most important steps we can take right now to make sure we're moving efficiently?
I think one of the, one of the most important is to make sure that we're moving intentionally and with a sense of urgency. If we have vacant positions and we post those positions, we know when that position's going to close, we know that we're working with a representative from DHR that's going to prescreen that and turn that over. When we get that, that list, or get those candidates, that we're intentionally reviewing those, scheduling interviews, making decisions. So, it's, if you have a position that's open, the major thing is making sure that we have an intense sense of urgency to get that filled. Another thing is determining what you need, and if it's not the position that you have, making sure that that position is reclassified, that all those skills and abilities are listed in there, so that we can go through that process. That's a different process altogether, but making sure that you have the position that you need in your business, and making sure that goes through the reclassification process in advance, so that you can hire that position. The third thing, I think is, we are continuing to work with the agencies about the recruitment process. If there's something that the agency identified on their piece, part, that needs to be reworked or something that we can review in the workday system, then keep continuing that partnership and seeing what we need to do. Like you said, we started this, we made some changes in March, but we're not finished. We're still having committee meetings, we're still talking about the process and what we need to do to improve that process.
Thank you. I got some other questions. You mentioned on March 28th, you kind of turned that reporting factor on, the ability to kind of start tracking it. I guess my question, when do you think you may have some data versus, now that you are reporting?
I would like to, if you want to look at, translate three to six months, and so, we haven't started the reporting process on that yet, because we're still collecting that data, but probably, I'm going to say to get good data at least six months out from March the 28th.
So, six months out from March 28th?
Yes.
So, maybe in like September, we should have some, okay, thank you. And I guess my other question is, you mentioned some vacancies having closing dates, right, I guess, or like pushing them before their close date. Do all vacancies have closing dates? Because, you know, I'm hearing some are open for as long as 18 months, and what's the difference between like those and those who have?
Yeah, there's some that has, was called continuous, because they're always like pulling, there's some that has continuous dates, but we can tell you what the average is for the dates. Based on the Civil Service Commission, there's some that we have to post for a period of time. And so, it all depends on the position, when that closing date takes place.
I'm Lynn Bligh, Assistant Deputy Director. I think there's two different things here. When we talk about closing, what Director Brinkley is referring to is when a position is posted.
Can you speak directly into the mic?
Sorry. Director Brinkley is referring to is when a position is posted for advertisement and closed versus an open position being closed. For an agency to fill a position, they must, for a vacancy, they must submit a requisition within workday. Then our team gets that, they review the job posting, they put it out there, they collect the resumes, and then when that position closes for the job posting, we submit those requisition, or those candidates to the agency, who then goes through and does their review, decides who they want to interview, and conduct that piece of the process.
Got you. Yep, I understand, and so some of them doesn't, don't, some positions don't have a closing date, I guess, in order to collect applicants?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess my last question is, just typically, how long does it take on average to hire someone? Do you have any information versus when they originally apply to when they finally get onboarded, rather than like interviews and everything else?
Yeah. We've been doing modeling of that, because there's twofold.
Director, if you could speak directly into the mic.
There's twofold. There's pieces that DHR has, and there's pieces that the agency has. So, we're trying to work through, like, when we turn it over, we had no, you know, recourse on when the agency reads it, interviews them. That's not part of DHR's purview today, so we can't say, you know, we posted it, it closed, we turned it over now, today.
Okay.
But we're looking at, like I said, we turned that on March the 28th, we'll be able to say how long it takes from the posting to the hire.
Okay, and because I will say it's good that we have that coordination, because when we hire someone, they're looking at us as one city.
Right.
Like, they're looking at one, they don't care if it's an agency or DHR, and we're all representatives. So, I'll be interested in figuring out, when is that beginning time and trying to find?
And we'll be able to tell that. That's the data that we're starting collecting, that we turned on March the 28th.
Okay. Thank you. And just how long have we been kind of taking this process, and we're just starting to track some of this, this time, I guess?
I mean, we were able to manually track, right? And say, we turned the list over when the hire took place, but as far, we were manually doing that, and we can still probably do manual some, but we haven't looked at the data as of yet, because we're still looking at the process, to make sure that what we have in place can be as speedy as possible.
Well, I just want to thank you for making those adjustments. I think they're critically important in figuring out where the bottlenecks are and what we can do to make sure we get city residents hired and working for, you know, one of the best cities in the world. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a series of questions here. I want to be clear on something first, that we know that low pay is like the key barrier to hiring folks in Baltimore City. I'm trying to figure out, you know, why do we, as a city, we contract so many of our jobs? I've seen them time after time, me myself being a DPW employee, where I've seen contractors come in to do the work that DPW, you know, workers are supposed to be doing, and also I've seen where contractors came in to do work after city agencies had already laid down the work, like we're following up behind them, and sometimes we're following, DPW workers are also following behind those contractors. It's like double work and double pay. I'm curious to know, what is the reason of us having over 1,600 vacancies and not able to fill, not many of them? When I look at it, I break it down to say there's like 115 in each councilmatic district, right? And I know we get emails and phone calls all day, every day, when folks are asking, sending emails in reference to, you know, being hired. I have 140 people in my district that wants to be hired through the city of Baltimore, but I'm wondering why is there like a halt in hiring folks from Baltimore City?
I can, I can try to jump in here, and I may defer to HR. So, in terms of the use of contractors versus permanent city staff, what you see, especially in fiscal 26, is a lot of intentionality from the administration to lean in to creating city slots in exchange for utilizing external contracts. So, you see that specifically in finance, in the IT department, as well as in the health department, where they're looking at places where they were previously using contracts and coming in and creating permanent positions in order to provide that service at a net savings for the city. So, I, we're moving in that direction. I would say in terms of getting these slots filled, it's not, it's not a one size fits all, and it's all about the partnership that Director Brinkley is talking about. So, for example, if we look at the Department of Public Works and the additional crews that have been added to that agency over the last couple of budgets, the Bureau of Solid Waste has one of the lowest vacancy rates in the city. In fact, I believe that as of today, they may be overhired in terms of their overall pins. What that, what the Bureau of Solid Waste case study shows us is that when there's a lot of intentionality and focus in terms of the recruitment process, the onboarding process, we see that agencies can get their positions filled. And so, what is happening is you see other agencies trying to sort of learn from what DPW did in order to get those positions filled, so that we can replicate and have those same successes in other agencies. Because while DHR is a partner in helping to recruit and support agencies in the process to fill vacancies, a lot of this does sit within individual agency shops in terms of getting stuff posted, having career fairs, bringing recommendations forward to say that the requirements, the minimum quals in the classifications, maybe those need to be adjusted. What we're seeing is that all those strategies combined is what is helping us to drive down our overall vacancy number.
So, you said we, and DPW said they're, they're over the limit in hiring. So, if we're over the limit in hiring, why are we having contractors do the jobs? And I see street sweepers from other counties in the city of Baltimore cleaning out streets.
So, in terms of the breakdown on that, part of the issue and the reason why there's additional crews being created in the 26 budget, is that DPW is trying to drive down the size of their routes. So, the 15 new crews that, that I'm referencing are focused on trash and recycling routes, and so for a period of time, those crews will continue to be supplemented by external contracts until these new individuals can be recruited and onboarded and trained properly before they get out on the streets and start working a route. I would defer to Director Zaid, when he comes back for his hearing next week, in terms of sort of his overall strategy to reducing the use of contractors on some of the other operations like street sweeping and some of the utility-related items.
Okay, thank you. I have another question. Does fiscal year 2026 budget include any investment to raise, excuse me, to raise wages consistent with the salary-study recommendations?
We are currently in active negotiations with all of the nine city unions, and wages are part of that effort. You know, happy to discuss more of that offline with you, but not able to disclose the status of the city's wage proposals while, since those negotiations are ongoing.
Okay, I'll, I'll go to the second round for other questions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you, Director Larson. I'm going to take a moment actually to dig into Fire Police. Of course, as Chair of Public Safety, these are agencies overseas, so, according to the data the administration provided, the city spent approximately $109 million on overtime during the calendar year 2024 at just these two agencies. Director, recognizing the difference between calendar and fiscal years, how much was actually budgeted for overtime at the Fire Department and the Police Department for 2024? And did we exceed that budgeted amount and require supplemental appropriations for that year for our public safety agencies?
I do not have those direct numbers from the prior, the direct overtime numbers from the prior budgets in front of me, and can, we can take that as a formal follow-up request. I do have the fiscal '23 and fiscal '24 supplementals. So, in fiscal '23, the Police Department did not require an end-of-the-year supplemental. They ended the year within budget. Actually, I believe they had a surplus. The Fire Department ended fiscal '23 with an $18.9 million deficit. Some, a portion of that was overtime, and then a portion of that was unbudgeted contractual and supply expenses. In fiscal '24, Police and Fire combined required a $36.6 million supplemental. $33.3 million of that was from the Fire Department. That was coming from overtime and the continued use of some of those unbudgeted contractual costs, and the Police Department's deficit was $3.3 million, which was primarily overtime.
Councilman, real quick, could you just restate the question that is going to formulate a committee request?
Sure. So, the question was, how much was actually budgeted for overtime at the, for 2024 for both Fire and Police? And I think she's answered whether or not we exceeded that budget and required supplementals. The answer is yes.
In fiscal '24, not, in fiscal '23, it was only Fire, not Police.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. And Director, and Nina, you'll work with us to get the rest of that question answered.
Certainly.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can you tell me, Director, how much we budgeted in fiscal year '25 for overtime?
Citywide, or just in those two departments?
In those two departments. In those two departments.
Uh, collectively in fiscal twenty five, the budget was, uh, forty eight point eight million dollars in the two departments. Notably, a, a portion of that is, uh, non-general fund overtime. If we look just specifically at the general fund component, that is, uh, forty two point one million.
And, um, are we on track to exceed that budgeted amount?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I'm, I'm sure you know this, uh, last year, a, an individual in the Fire Department, a paramedic, actually earned three hundred and fifty eight thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars, according to a report from the Baltimore Sun. I'm sure you would agree that's not financially sustain, sustainable. So I have to ask, um, what, what are the key factors causing substantial vacancies in our public safety agencies? Clearly, I would suggest, um, many of our problems, our biggest problems, are between the Fire and Police Departments. And what are the specific steps that we're taking a day to address these issues?
So both the, the Fire Chief and the Police Commissioner are incredibly focused on increasing staffing levels within their departments. I would actually defer specifics regarding those efforts to both respective agencies as part of their upcoming hearing because they can go into way more detail, um, than what I can, can, than what I'm aware of, um, from my purview. Just to, to reiterate, what, what we've seen in the Fire Department is that they've actually been able to get to a place over the course of fiscal twenty five where they have filled the bulk of their firefighter vacancies. Where we have the continued issue in Fire is around our paramedic positions. The, the Fire Chief and I have had a lot of conversations about those pins. And, you know, he frequently cites, um, the, uh, the national shortage that exists around paramedics. The vacancies that we see in our paramedics, paramedic classification has been pretty consistent over multiple years. We haven't seen it spike up. We've just seen it sort of stay flat. I believe it's, it hovers around seventy to eighty vacancies in that classification. On the, on the police side, um, it's a little different in that the, the bulk of the vacancies that we're seeing are from the officer positions. And, um, unlike paramedics where we've seen that sort of be flat, officers, we saw the vacancy numbers increase in twenty three and twenty four. We're seeing them come down in twenty five, um, based off of some of the new recruitment reforms that the, the Police Commissioner has put in place.
And just to sort of find our point here, because I think it helps us understand the, the scale of which folks are making overtime here. What, what is the incoming salary of a paramedic?
I do not have that number off the top of my head. I, I'd be more than happy to provide that as a follow-up. I believe the, the incoming salary for a police officer, we hover between sixty and, and sixty five thousand.
Okay. Yeah, if, if we can get that as a follow-up, that would be really helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilmember Porter. And I do, before moving to the Councilmember Porter, want to recognize the Mayor's Chief of Staff, Calvin Young. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Director Larson, you talked about constraints, um, several times in your presentation today. Talk to, uh, talk to us about the connection to service delivery. Over the past couple of months, council members, um, many council members on this committee today have talked about the increased service delivery for DPW, for DOT, for many of our agencies. Talk to me about how those vacancies and overtime allot with the increased amount of service delivery that, um, we require for our taxpayer, I mean, for our residents of the city.
Yeah, so, I mean, as I, as I was mentioning, our, our goal for all of these sort of daily minimum staffing services is to provide them with, um, permanent filled slots where they have, um, sufficient staffing levels, uh, that reflect the current service delivery model. I want to be very clear that it is in the best interest of all of us if we're doing that through straight time versus, um, requiring our, uh, employees, especially our frontline work, employees to work long, hard shifts and, and incur these high level of overtime. What, what we have found, I would say, is that some of these service delivery models have really changed over the years. And we know that in the case of some of our services, they're just fundamentally different. In some cases, the pandemic really changed the way that we do it. In other cases, other factors are driving a different service delivery demands. Like in the case of DPW, more extreme weather is making it hard to provide trash and recycling services in the city of Baltimore where so much of it is driven by people actually physically walking those routes. And so what you've seen is that we've had to go back and we've had to look at the staffing level models that are inherent in our budget and look at areas where the staffing level that we have in the budget or the staffing level that the agency is trying to provide or the national best practice staffing level, there may be a big disconnect between what we're providing and the budget. The best case of, the best example that I can point to of where we've made a lot of progress on that is in DPW, where we've been able to, um, sort of make significant investments over multiple budgets in increasing the number of crews so that we could get the number of stops down so that it, there's less strain on our solid waste workers who have to walk those routes every day. I think another example where we're looking at, um, service delivery models and looking at ways that we can optimize, um, to be more reflective of the demands is again in Fire. So, um, in, so EMS, emergency medical services is where the driver of overtime is in Fire. We know that over sixty percent of our EMS calls are for basic life support calls, or non-acute calls. And so one of the things, um, that, that Chief Wallace can talk to you all more about next Thursday at his hearing is how he's looking at the level of medic units that he staffs within the department and what opportunities there are to potentially, um, we, we are over-resourced in terms of those advanced life support units. And so potentially by downgrading some of those units to basic life support where we have higher demand for our call volume, we can actually start to chip away at some of this overtime because we can, we can align the, the staffing model better with the current demand for services.
So is it a correct assumption that the current overtime that we are seeing is just trying to match the increase and also the national best practice of service demands for a lot of these service delivery items that we're seeing in our city?
Yes. I think what you're seeing is our agency directors trying to react to these new changes. And I think especially looking at the data set that is calendar year twenty three and calendar year twenty four, we have to take it, keep in account that those are sort of, I, I see calendar year twenty four as likely our peak and that we're starting to come down from there, um, as we, you know, throughout calendar year twenty four is sort of where we saw a lot of these things align in terms of high vacancy levels, um, and, you know, just the ongoing pressure for service delivery. And so, um, you know, I, I believe in terms of what we're seeing, especially, um, based off of our ability to get positions funded in fiscal twenty five, we've seen, um, you know, a dramatic improvement in the number of pins that we've been able to get filled since the start of the fiscal year. We're actually, um, our vacancy number is down by twelve percent since, uh, July first. Uh, I, I think that we have seen the peak on the overtime and we should start to see that come down.
Okay, I'm going to transition a little bit to service optimization within DPW. One of the questions that I had asked last budget hearing was related to Rubicon and the use of Rubicon for optimization of routes within DPW, just overall service delivery within DPW. When we talk through those staffing models, how are you all using technology and AI to kind of optimize your service delivery overall within DPW and also within other agencies as well?
Yeah, so DPW, um, has invested in different route optimization tools. They first did it with trash and now they have been doing it with recycling routes. Um, I believe that they are also doing it with the street sweeping routes where they're using this technology to look at how they can optimize the number of stops per route. We have data from DPW that shows there's, you know, there's a lot of variation in terms of, um, the length of time that it takes crews to finish routes. Because our city is so diverse and the neighborhoods that we're providing services in, services in are so different. And so what Director Zaid is looking at, especially in light of adding additional crews again in fiscal twenty six, is how do we, uh, with, with this addition of crews, we finally get down to that national best practice in terms of number of per stops? But then he's going even further to looking at, how do we sort of, um, ensure that that makes sense across the city? Um, and I would, uh, I would defer more specific questions regarding how they're operationalizing that to his hearing next week.
Okay. And last but certainly not least, when we're talking about, um, when we're talking about overtime and vacancies, have you all calculated what is the cost per resident?
I have not looked at it that way. So, uh, when you say cost per resident, you're looking at the over, like the average overtime cost?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the average overtime. If we're looking at average overtime data and how much, when we're talking about increased service delivery, what is the cost per resident? That, that each Baltimore resident is paying right now?
Okay. I, like I said, I have not analyzed the data that way, but I'd be happy to take that as a, as a follow-up.
And the reason why, the reason why I frame it in that manner is because when we're talking about the, the lack of population within our city, we're talking about the increased service delivery for a lot of these, like recycling. We have increased recycling in this upcoming budget. There needs to be some sort of allocation or thought process of the cost per, the cost per resident. Like, for example, the Police Department, when we're talking about public ser, public safety data, we talk about the cost of, um, public safety per resident in the city of Baltimore. We should be doing that for each agency so that we, as the council, have a clear understanding of where those funds are going and how much is, is kind of being allocated from an overtime perspective, not from actual service delivery models.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So just to, uh, that question is clear as a committee request. Looking at how much in total overtime, uh, if you equate out to all residents, how much per resident that would equal?
Yes. I would potentially ask for a little bit more time in, for that committee follow-up versus some of the other ones, because I just, we haven't looked at the data that way. Um, so it just may take us a little bit more time.
How, how much time do you need, Director?
I think for many of these other follow-up requests that I've been hearing to date, we can get responses by Tuesday. I would think on this one, I would, um, I would like to request, um, until the end of next week, if possible.
Okay. Until the end of next week is fine, just, you know, as we are now heading directly into budget season, um, the sooner the better, but end of next week is fine.
Certainly.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. A quick question for Director Larson and then some conference, further conversations with our human resources friends. One of the, um, pieces you mentioned in the presentation around new positions and the overall attempt, um, to, uh, kind of reallocate resources and people and pins within, uh, the Police Department are the civilian, civilianization efforts, right, of, of non-p patrol positions? So thirty nine positions last year, twenty one this year, um, right? So sixty to, no, no, that's the, uh, nine this year, so forty eight total across the two years. When we do that, um, uh, and we then shift officers back towards patrol roles, I know we're adding these new civilian pins, but are we dropping the, I mean, are we counting them as filled on the, on the patrol side? I mean, are we?
So what we have seen, uh, and, and I had a meeting with the BPD leadership team about civilianization earlier this week, is what we've seen is that there is, um, a runway in terms of creating these pins and getting them, um, filled and trained, that allows the officers to get transitioned back to patrol. The lean into civilianization within the Police Department is, um, was actually started, the impetus behind it was the consent decree. And there were a number of provisions within the consent decree that talk about broader civilianization within the department. And so that's sort of been their framework that they've been working from. And so we've really seen, um, positions being civilized as part of the budget going back, I want to say like four or five budgets. But what we know is that, um, it's not all happening like in the same fiscal year in terms of them getting the, the pin classified, created, filled, trained, and then getting the officer back into patrol. It's been a, a longer lead time than, than what we had, had previously anticipated. The, the department can speak to specifics about what they're doing to improve that turnaround time. Um, and it's something that my team and I are continuing to look into, um, with, with BPD.
I appreciate that. Just looking then, I mean, right now, uh, in Police, seven hundred and eighteen vacancies, right? And these are, you said this is an ongoing process of five years. And so it's just forty eight in these two years. Presumably that number is, you know, we can figure out what the number is over the last five years of civilianization. But, you know, presumably that, that should make a significant impact in terms of filled positions on the patrol side and should be helping us bring down overtime costs. I mean, forty eight's a pretty good chunk of, uh, of that seven hundred and eighteen.
Certainly. And, um, a number, you know, I can go back and, and look at the, of the seven hundred and eighteen, I could go back and attribute how many of those are related to civilianization efforts. I can take that as a follow-up.
That would be great. I really appreciate it.
Yep.
And given that the lag time there, I mean, take that back. I mean, you said it's been a five-year, take that back as far, as far back as you want to go in a way that captures the full impact of that. I mean, I leave that to your discretion.
Certainly.
Okay. For human resources. So, um, alongside, I want to pick up where Chair Conway left off, um, in particular with, uh, Police and Fire. We've spoken a little bit, I know we'll have a chance during budget hearings to, to hear directly from, uh, the Commissioner and the Fire Chief about recruitment efforts. But wanted to talk about retention a little bit and what that looks like, right? Right? In addition to hindry people, we need to make sure we're retaining our existing workers. So based on what I've been hearing today, uh, it seems to me that, um, the ability to accumulate overtime is a way for employees to receive compensation increases that they would not otherwise receive from, say, an annual salary increase as part of the budget, as part of the union negotiations with the Director referenced before. Would you agree that overtime has played an outsized role in retaining employees who are already, you know, doing their jobs at a high level?
I couldn't agree or disagree with that because I haven't looked at that, that way.
What kind of retention strategies, setting aside this overtime question, what kind of retention strategies does Baltimore City employ?
If an employee gets a match from another, uh, uh, external entity, we match that. If an employee gets a offer from an internal entity, we can only match that. We may be able to go a little bit above for external, but internal, we match dollar per dollar. So if they get another offer for a position, their same position, we can, we normally, if their performance is standard or above, we normally match that.
That's across the city?
Yes.
Does, uh, DHR advise specific agencies on their respective retention strategies that may be specific to the needs of their, of their agency? I mean, do you are, do you consult with those agencies about how to, do that work better internally?
If they reach out to us, yes, we do.
Can you give an example of what that's looked like, say, with Police or Fire?
So if they reach you out to out in their recruiting and they want to look at a comparison in benefits, we can get them, you know, if the employees are going to, say, like Howard County or Hartford, we can give them what the comparison looks like, um, the co-pays, how we match up in our benefits compared to those, we can give them that information.
Okay, so from a, from a data standpoint to help them inform their decision-making?
Yes.
I'm wondering how individual agencies navigate employee retention. Like the Fire Department, um, uh, which logged over forty seven million in overtime dollars and seven hundred and eighty thousand hours in calendar year twenty four. I noticed that as of May of this year, there are a hundred and ninety seven vacant positions. The Fire Department, the majority of those, um, are less than eighteen months vacant. And as we already mentioned, I mean, a lot of them are critical frontline roles as paramedics. What turnover rates roughly are we seeing within the Fire Department? And then what retention strategies are, are we employing to the best of the knowledge of those gathered here, um, to retain, retain workers in that department?
I don't have that information today, but I can get you that information, what their turnover looks like and what, during an exit interview, if it was conducted, what the reasons were for them leaving and how the, um, agency had a conversation with them and what they tried to do to retain. I can get you that information because we don't have that information today.
Got it. I really appreciate that.
So just, I apologize, Councilman, just to restate that council committee request. So the Councilman is requesting both the, uh, retention data, So the councilman is requesting both the retention data, exit interview data in terms of who leaves, if we have, I guess, an analysis that you could do to produce back to the committee on primary reasons why folks are leaving and then?
For fire, right?
Right, within the fire department, I think, specific to EMT, to paramedics?
I mean, I think across the fire department overall, but we've already identified that the paramedic, EMT is the most critical issue, but.
Okay. Just want to make sure where, and what was the first part of that?
It was the turnover rates within the fire department, what are the rates themselves, and then whatever data exists about reasons for, to help us understand that better.
Okay, so turnover rate within the fire department, as well as an analysis of exit tickets, exit interviews, of why folks are leaving, is that, and is there like a timeline at which you can produce that?
We could probably get that within a week, because we'd have to work with the fire department, so we could probably get that within a week.
Thank you.
So today is May 22nd, so looking at May 29th?
Okay. That sounds good.
Great, thank you. Sorry, Councilman.
We mentioned that the paramedics, the paramedic gap is really driving this. I do appreciate what you lifted up in terms of being thoughtful about the level of service providing matching up with what the actual needs are. What opportunities are there? Does the fire department offer either through internal training or through payment for external training, the opportunities for firefighters to cross-train as paramedics and add that to their capacity so that we have a more highly-trained and more flexible workforce?
Yes. So again, gonna, I think we should bring that question back for their hearing, because between Chief Wallace and Chief Metz, they can provide a very comprehensive response about how they target that. They've also been really thoughtful that as they're bringing firefighters on and they're going through their regular training, they're also getting their EMT certification, so that once they're coming out of their academy class, they can be deployed directly to help backfill some of these EMS-related vacancies. So they can provide more information about sort of their strategy on that front. The other thing I'll lift up is that the fire department has an EMS apprenticeship program where they have a partnership with city schools to try to create pathways for high school students who have an interest in EMS and fire-related positions to try to get them plugged into different opportunities with the fire department. They'd also be able to report back on the success of that program.
Okay. Thank you, Director. I asked this of DHR, I'll ask it of you, because you're at the microphone right now. Given the extensive amount of overtime that is being incurred at the fire department, has overtime essentially become part of the retention strategy at the fire department?
No, I don't think so. So I guess, let me make sure I'm understanding your question. So are you asking that is the additional work that's part of the overtime schedule and the compensation from those overtime hours, is that becoming part of the compensation package to try to keep employees? Is that the question?
Yeah, essentially, it's become so normalized that it's an expectation that you're going to be able to actually, I mean, here's your actual salary, but you can expect to earn this much, because this is the way that, not in a temporary way, but in a fairly permanent way, that the department operates. And so that becomes part of our pitch to attract and retain staff, that this isn't a mistake that we're trying to correct, but this is just the way that we operate here.
I don't think so, because again, the fire chief shares the goal of being able to provide his service with as many regular shifts as possible. We are in an active union negotiation with the fire unions, both the firefighters and the fire officers. I will say, you know, we have bargained with them the last two budgets as well and have been working really thoughtfully with them to figure out what needs to happen with wages, just regular wages to make them as competitive as possible. But also working with the union partners to identify other operational issues that contribute to overtime within the department and trying to figure out how we can work together with the union through the contract, through different provisions, in order to drive down overtime. Because it's my sense that especially with some of these hours, you know, the members also, the members don't want to be working this either. We all share the same goal of wanting to drive down their overtime numbers. Unfortunately, you know, with the paramedic vacancy number being what it is and the, you know, the call volume trends being what they are, that's where you sort of get this pressure. I don't want to disclose too much about our, the different provisions that we've been discussing at the bargaining table, given the fact that those are still open, but I'd be happy to talk with you offline about some of those items in more detail.
I appreciate it. The last thing here is this, and this is for police and for fire, you mentioned that there is a limit beyond which people are not at all interested in earning more, like the money available for earning more overtime is not nearly as important to them as the time away from their families and other personal commitments or their own ability to sustain themselves in the work. So granted that there is a limit there, it may be a different number than having it fully staffed with kind of very minimal overtime, that there's probably still a gap between where people are. So in your view, if we reduce the amount of overtime that we are expecting officers of the fire department or police department to work, could that affect our ability to retain officers who have gotten used to a certain amount of overtime, a sustainable amount of overtime from their perspective and the money attached to it?
Yeah. And I would actually encourage you to talk with the police commissioner about some of the employee surveys that he has done with his rank and file, because he has really interesting data in terms of with, when they're losing employees, like what are some of the drivers that are impacting them? And, you know, we always think that compensation is the first thing, but we know that there's a lot of other factors that contribute to folks wanting to leave. And that would be, you know, burnout issues, you know, and, you know, I think what we don't want to have happen is, we don't want to pay to train somebody, get them on-boarded, get them to where they're, you know, factored into our shift model, burn them out, and then have them go to Baltimore County because they're working in a quieter setting, perhaps in a nicer station with nicer equipment. And so I think we have to come at this from a perspective of how do we get these positions filled up more, filled up to a more appropriate level so that people are not facing that burnout? And then how do we come with other strategies outside of just what we're offering in terms of compensation to make sure that people have nice, like decent, nice-running cars that are being maintained on a routine basis, that they have police stations and fire stations with adequate facilities, gender-appropriate facilities, working air conditioning, working heating, and trying to come at those factors as well that we know drive people's decisions.
Thank you, Director Larson.
Real quick, Councilman Conway had a committee request.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll tell you, I appreciate the line of questioning. My parents work not for this city, but were city workers and certainly appreciated the overtime, so I do know it is important to some families. I'm curious, as we're trying to figure out what that sort of threshold is for employees that are receiving overtime and looking forward to that overtime and potentially counting on that overtime, would you be able to share with us the median overtime for both the police and fire departments so that we can understand roughly what an officer in a paramedic or a firefighter might expect to bring in?
Do you want to see, I would suggest that we could provide that in hours rather than dollars, just because the hours are, especially in the fire department where we've had the contract increases within this data set, the hours are going to give you a better comparison.
That's fine. We can provide both?
Yep. The other flag that I will have is that the contracts for both unions have different seniority provisions in terms of how folks get overtime. And so some of those contract provisions could be distorting the data as well, because as you have more seniority with the department, you also get, you have more leave, you have, you know, you have additional sort of perks, I would guess, in terms of how you get drafted for these types of things.
Sure. And I think my thought here is if we have an officer that's working for the city and, or a firefighter that's working for the city and brings in $25,000 to $50,000 in overtime every year, they're counting on that maybe? I want to know what that number is for the median officer or firefighter.
And I would, I mean, we can certainly provide it for police and fire, but I would also say this is a really big deal for Cub and Ask Me, where those employees make significantly less than our fire and police officers and where, you know, multiple years of really high overtime numbers is making a really big difference when your take-home pay is less than $40,000 and you've been able to, you know, earn significant overtime.
Yeah, I appreciate, we can request it for all of the major positions.
Director, what's an appropriate time to get back to this committee with that data?
So, Mr. Council President, what I will do after we get done with the hearing is, Gabe and I will coordinate with your staff to make sure we've captured all of the follow-up requests walking out of the room. And then what I would like to do is just look at them collectively. We're going to try to get to every, try to get follow-ups for the simple stuff by Tuesday morning. And then what I'll do is I'll look at the full list of items and let you know what we can work to provide by next week.
That would be great. And I assume this one will take a little bit longer, but, or into next week, but I appreciate that. Thank you. And just from Councilman Parker's line of questioning, just two things I'll lift up. One, appreciate the comment about civilianization and the consent decree. Also know that is something that Mayor Scott has been championing really since he was the councilman and since we served together, as well as some of my colleagues on this council. The other piece that Councilman Parker lifts up is, you know, when we think about truth in budgeting, I think it is both for us as the council and administration, as we consider the budget process, but it's also for the folks that we hire. And I think the point there is, I think most folks who serve in this city on the council have heard a narrative that part of how we recruit, we retain is whether tacit, I am sure tacit, understanding that some positions will receive a significant amount of compensation in overtime. And again, I would just argue that that is not best practice, that is not good practice in terms of either recruitment or retention. Folks should know essentially what they're going to be paid and then understand the caps and the limits on overtime. And I think as a fiscally responsible city, it is critically important that we are moving in that direction and that we are not, as the chair said, writing blank checks to either agencies or city workers, and that we pay them right, that we give just compensation, but not unfettered overtime.
And I, you know, I just, I believe that that is in line with the administration's goals as well, and I think that you see that especially with investments in a number of core city services. I know we've talked a lot about solid waste, but really leaning in there and ensure that we're, ensuring that we're funding a staffing level that allows workers to provide those services at a safe level and one that does not have this inherent assumption of overtime.
Thank you. Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Had some good lines of questions, just kind of covered what I was originally going for. So maybe first, I just want to lift up a point that was made by the first couple of members who had questions. I think it is, I'm really interested in the idea that we just say, hey, if there's, if this position has been vacant for 18 months or more, just using the phantom positions thing, that we just assume we're not going to fill that this next fiscal year and we, the budget reflects that, right? Whether it's overtime or wherever else that money would have been going, that seems like, to use this repeated phrase, truth in budgeting, that seems like a really empowering way for the council to have good oversight over the budget and to give the public transparency and understanding what is already a really complex budget, right? But that would make it meaningfully easier for members of the public to understand as well. Is there, I mean, do you see a really compelling reason why we wouldn't just do that? Just say any, just say 18 months more vacant, we're going to assume it's not going to be filled, and we're going to adjust the budget accordingly?
So we did wipe out a bunch of these vacant positions in last year's budget. That was part of the strategy for balancing the fiscal '25 budget. We went through and agencies had to provide specific pins that had been vacant for a significant period of time that could be abolished. Those specific numbers are referenced in last year's budget documents, but I can go find that and point it to you. We also have significantly fewer positions that have been vacant for this period of time compared to where we were last May coming into budget hearing. So if we looked at, you know, last May, we were, you know, we were closer to 900-plus vacancies that had been vacant for that, over that 18-month window, and so that sort of falls in line with what we're seeing, that the overall number of vacancies is declining in the city. Again, these are policy decisions about city operations in terms of how we want to approach, if we want to just abolish them as part of our budget process. Because if we, in the case of police and fire, if we abolish the positions, but we don't come back and have a corresponding change to service levels, what we're doing by abolishing the positions is that we are creating gaps in next year's budget. So let's say we came in and we abolished all the vacant, those 252 vacant police positions that have been vacant for more than 18 months. If we don't adjust the shift constants that are embedded in the service delivery model for the police, for the fire department, or for the police department, and we just take the pins, what you're going to see is you're going to see they were previously using the funding from those 252 pins to cover overtime costs, but if they don't adjust the service, the service level constants, then you're just going to have a bigger deficit in overtime spending.
So I, you lost me there. So what I'm saying is if, and I understand this idea of sworn officers in police and fire, we're just taking the, we're taking the unfunded, the unfilled, unfunded and putting that into overtime, got it? Why wouldn't we just, like, with these 278 positions or whatever, in the police department, why wouldn't we just get rid of those pins and just put it directly into overtime so that we can see that?
So part of the, part of the issues around the authorized force in the police department are related to staffing levels that are outlined in the consent decree. And so I think that there has been sensitivity to showing a reduction in the authorized force in the department, even if those dollars are getting reallocated to overtime while the city is under the consent decree.
So you're saying is, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I'm hearing is we don't want to show how we are actually staffing the shift constants, because that may have some issue with the consent decree?
The consent decree directs the city to achieve a certain staffing level within our police department. And so one of the things that the police commissioner reports out at all the consent decree hearings is the progress that he's made towards getting positions filled. There has been, there is sensitivity regarding reducing the number of positions as that is a stated goal to try to get those pins filled. Now, is it a challenging goal in terms of how we get there? Certainly, but I believe that there has been a lot of sensitivity. If you remove the pins, then that eliminates the goal of trying to get back to those staffing levels that are outlined in that, in the consent decree.
Okay. The two-thirds of the positions are still within that less than 18-month vacant, and I hear you there. It's also worth, like, obviously, this is not in any way specific to the police department, and so the, are there any, besides the consent decree within the police department, for the other half of these long-term vacant positions across the city, is there a reason why we wouldn't just get rid of these long-term vacant positions?
You know, this is something that, you know, as the city's budget director, I push on these pins every year to try to make progress to see, like, what can we either do to get them filled, what can we do to repurpose them, or can they just go away to help us balance the budget? It's always a diff, you know, every time you walk through the budget? It's always a diff, you know, every time you walk through with each of these agencies, they're going to have different reasons for you about why the pins can't be abolished and what their plans are for trying to utilize the pins and get them filled.
Okay. Yeah, I just think the, the budget appropriation chair's point about, we need the transparency on the, the front end, like, that's the point of the, the council can't have oversight if there's all these, like, other sort of hidden things in the, in the budget process.
If I may, sorry, Nina Famas, Director of Government Affairs.
Director Famas, do you want to?
Thank you. So I just wanted to add a point to what Director Larson was saying about the consent decree. So while we have the goal of filling those vacant positions every year, we know that we're not necessarily going to reach that goal, but as the consent decree mandates that we have a certain level of service every year and that we have a certain, like, staffing model and goal, by eliminating those pins and automatically putting them in overtime, what we're saying is, we're not going to achieve that goal. And we're going to push our efforts away from trying to increase staffing and instead just accept that overtime is the model that we're going to pursue. So while we might not achieve that every year, we still need to push toward it and push toward greater recruitment and retention.
Okay. And I know, I'm, no, I'm getting the, the hook on this. I have something we can follow up on over a bunch of seasons. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Not, not a problem. And appreciate the clarification. I, I do think, just to the councilman's point, you know, just thinking beyond just the consent decree and the police department, I mean, as this seems to be endemic within multiple agencies, not just PPD, I do think the point is salient that we could just take away some of those pins and have more accurate budgeting. With that, I want to go to Council, Councilman Conway, real quick.
Final point in your question, we don't have to eliminate the pins. We could move the money without eliminating the pins. Is that an option here?
I mean, I think that is essentially what currently happens, right?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think to your point, Councilman Conway, what you're asking is, you know, redeploying the dollars within the, the agency budgets.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, the culture around, and whether or not it's right, and, you know, we, we always try to, to come at these things, especially around the spirit of having a budget that reflect, you know, the budget should reflect the plan, right? Like, it lays out our plan for what we're going to execute next year. The issue that we run up against with agency partners is historically, if a pin goes away, if a position goes away, it's hard to get it back. And so, agencies prefer to hold on to these positions because they want to try to fill them and they want to try to have folks in these slots. And even if they know that perhaps it's not the most realistic thing. And so I think one of the things that we sort of try to work with, and especially you've, you've seen progress in terms of that the vacancy numbers have, have trended down significantly in fiscal '25, but we still have pockets of city operations where there are a number of pins that we need to continue to work with to understand, like, what is the true plan here? How should we be deploying those resources?
Thanks, Director Larson. I appreciate it. Councilman Bullock? All right. Councilmember Ramos?
Two, excellent. Double, double the, double the questions.
Don't tempt me. Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks for bringing this for us. I want to totally shift gears away from police and fire and talk a little bit about the other agencies and not DPW either, because that's a special case, I think, with special funding. I wanted to just ask a general question and then some specifics. One is, in general, we, it sounds, it looks to me in the budget that we're actually putting in the entire salary of those positions, but it definitely takes a minute to be able to hire. So what happens with that? Let's say we put in a new position and it takes us, you know, six months to hire. So what happens with that, those dollars from that initial six months because it took us six months to hire that position?
So, in fiscal '26, my goal would be that it shouldn't take six months. And I will actually point to-
But it does take some time. I'm just using six months as, as an example, but it does take time.
Yeah. Again, a lot of that is dependent upon how quickly information can get out of the agency and through the process. You know, I'll point to, there were a batch of positions that were funded in the '25 budget that were through and created by August. And so it's all dependent upon sort of the agency's ability to do that. Part of the way we're getting ahead of that in the '26 budget is we've been able to make some improvements in the budget process and workday, that if agencies were able to submit formal position descriptions and org charts, we were able to have those evaluated by the Department of Human Resources as part of the budget review process. And so we're actually able to classify and create the pin in the budget. So, for a lot of these positions, agencies are going to be able to access them on, you know, as soon as the budget gets adopted and start working to fill them. So, our goal is to try to partner with people to try to get these things filled as, as quickly as possible. In the event that it, there is a delay and things drag out throughout the fiscal year, any of that surplus funding that is available from what we had set aside for that position, you know, could be, the agency can utilize that for other sort of one-time costs that they may be incurring in that year. One of the things that I encourage agencies is that if you are hiring a brand-new function, a, a person that did not exist on your team before, there's other costs associated with that person joining your team. You need to accommodate their space. You need to make sure that they have the things that they need to do to do their job. And so there's those additional one-time costs that, if you're hiring a whole team, so if we think about, for example, some of the things in housing where we've created, like, the new teams of attorneys, of interim attorneys and stuff like that, those costs can add up. So what we try to do is we try to take care of, like, any of those upfront costs associated with getting people on-boarded. We don't want to tie those dollars to any sort of recurring costs. Like, we don't want to use those dollars for salary upgrades for other positions or any other sort of recurring costs in the budget because we know in the next year, when that position is full, or is filled, you're going to need 12 months of salary for that individual.
But that's a, and I realize that we are trying to get the timeframe down from being able to establish positions to hiring. And I think that's really important and good because we had that horrible pause when we first did the interim attorneys, and now I think we're out of flow, which is great. But yeah, I was just curious, because that sounds like it's another way that the agencies are spending some money without us knowing what that is in terms of, you know, that, that wait time. So if you're eliminating the wait time, that goes away. But, you know, just making that observation. My second question, which is not related, is, we have a, I just got the data thanks to Councilman Gray for making the request about the ARPA-funded positions. And some of them might end up going away, but some of them are being absorbed into this budget. And where that relates to vacancies is, it's, it seems to me like there could be some of these positions that are immediately moved to fill a vacancy if that vacancy is reclassified. And so, for instance, the health department, right? So the health department has, we're just going to say, right now, well, greater than 18 months, there's 144 positions, several of them are, well, the health department is a hun, is like 80% grant-funded, so this may not-
Sixty-five, yeah, 65 of the health department's vacancies are in the general fund that have been vacant for 18 or more months.
Right. So, is it possible that some of these folks that currently work for the health department that are ARPA-funded would then be moved over to that? Or how, what's the plan for filling those positions?
That's the goal. And actually, HR, under the direction of the city administrator, had previously been going through an effort to look at some of those ARPA pins to try to do that matching process with city agencies. And so that, that work is ongoing. Because of, of course, if we've, if through ARPA, we've been able to bring folks into different roles with, with the city and train them up in different skillsets, obviously, we want to retain them, if we can, through some of these other slots. One of the things that's a challenge a little bit in the health department is that while they have these 65 long-term vacancies, most of the health department's vacancies are in school health. Most of the people on that ARPA list have a different skillset than serving as a school health nurse or community aide in one of our schools. And so, we just, and this, the same conversation comes up with trying to, you know, absorb federal workers who might be losing a job. Yeah, we have vacant positions, but we have vacant paramedics, police officers, school health aides, 911 dispatchers, you know, that's not always aligned with the opportunities that individuals are looking for.
But it sounds like you're making every effort to try to do that, because I would hate to have folks who've been working with us under ARPA funding very diligently to then lose them because, you know, we don't have a position for them, even though we do have a position for them, it just needs to be reclassified.
And what I can say is that this has been a central focus of the city administrator, and she's been focused on this for over a year in terms of looking at how we can retain as many of those employees as possible.
Yeah, because it looks like in this list, there's a lot over at MOED, which they're working through, MOHS, which is, I'm, I'm concerned about that because I think that we could move those positions over. Monty has a lot of them, but we, it looks like in this list, there's already a plan for them. Yeah, just trying to figure out the best way to be able to fill these vacancies when we already have people here, particularly since this is funding that's going to end.
Certainly.
And so, you know, if you could keep us abreast of those conversations, and I'll ask about it with each agency in the, in the budget hearings as well.
Wonderful.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Gray?
Thank you. Is there a city-wide performance review that links overtime trends to department efficiency? And when I ask, I'm talking about the five biggest agencies, which is fire, police, et cetera. And I guess more specifically, like DPW and DOT as well, with their ability to perform service on time, like, you know, missed trash collection or delays in pothole repairs. Do you guys have some type of internal process that reviews that each year to see, like, these are the agencies would hire OT and correlating that with, these are also the agencies where, you know, things are missed because folks are working so hard or there, or there is burnout?
So I would defer that question to the city administrator. She leads the formal evaluation process with the executives, including the executives from these different agencies. And so I would defer that question to her in terms of how she's incorporating that metric in her review.
Okay. And could I also, I have a committee request. This kind of falls in line with Councilman Parker's request. Could you provide data on how overtime correlates with, I would say employee burnout, but more importantly, not just with the turnover, but with sick leave and, and those types of metrics? Because I think when, when we're thinking about folks being burnt out, we think about them quitting. But I don't think we also think about folks just using all of their leave just to stay, stay out as long as they can, or whatever, like, whatever type of leave you can actually use just so you can give yourself that break. And, because that plays a role to me in burnout. If folks are, if, if there's a correlation between folks using a lot of leave along with also just the turnover, and instead of just the fire department, all five of the biggest agencies. So that would be DOT, DPW, fire, police, and, wait, those were, I think those four. Yeah.
Yeah, certainly. I cannot provide that by next week. That is a summer project. That is, that, that's a massive project that will, I certainly cannot accommodate at the same time as staffing the budget hearings next week. But I can take the request back to the city administrator and look at how we can tackle that project over the summer.
Director, could you just restate for the committee what you're going to take back to the city administrator?
The request to do a study where we look at the correlation between overtime utilization and leave trends in these top five agencies.
Yes.
Councilman, is that-
Yes. I, I think, I think that's very important. Because when we, when we look at overtime and employee burnouts, it correlates with somehow busier and our core agencies. We all want our firefighters to respond when there's a fire. We want our police officers to respond when there's a crime. When there's a pothole, we want it filled. When there's a missed trash pickup, we want it picked up. And when folks are being burnt out and they are being pushed to their brink, they can't deliver on those core city services that, quite frankly, these are the things that folks judge our ability to be, you know, great legislators or a great mayor or a city council president. If those things aren't taken care of, it doesn't matter what, or what's in the headlines, I just know these things aren't taken care of. And so if we can get some type of study on that, I think that would help us better understand, just as a city, we can do better to make sure that, you know, our core services and folks are being taken care of.
And Councilman, does September 1 work as a date for you for that study? Director, you said you would not be able to complete it until end of summer. Is that-
That is a larger project. And so I would, I need to speak with additional partners about accessing that data. I don't have access about, I don't have a, we don't have to litigate it in the setting, but there are some data access issues that we're going to have to work through in order to be able to do that study. We will work to complete the study as quickly as possible, but I don't want to commit to a timeframe in this setting until I have more information about how quickly I can get the, the data.
Okay. So as, as quickly as we can follow up with that, I appreciate it.
Yep.
And if we could just, maybe Nina or Director, if you could just put in writing what that study will look like, and then we can sidebar afterward about timeline for it. But understand, you got the budget hearings coming up.
Certainly.
Thanks. Go ahead, Councilman.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Larson, I thank you for your great work on this. I know you've been working overdrive and overtime to get this budget to us. So thank you for that. You know, you provided me some information last night regarding the fines and fees, and there's hundreds of them. How many would you say there are that are being studied and considered for increase in, in this, this next fiscal year?
Yeah. So, in regards to our recommendation regarding the, the fee increase, so the city has an inventory of 2,000-plus fees. We've taken those, we've broken them into three different groups. We're currently reviewing the fees that are in group one, and that comprises about 640 fees.
Gotcha. So, is it fair to say that it's possible that over 600 fees could be increased over the next year?
What part of the, the fee study that we're looking at is also looking at opportunities for where we can consolidate and collapse them. And so, what I, what I think it would be fair to say is that we are looking currently at our oldest subset of fees that have not been updated for many years and looking for ways that we can benchmark that data and also look at the current cost of providing those services to look at where we need to identify new fee structures or changes to how we're collecting the revenue for those fees. So, I do think that there will be recommendations for how we could modify most of those fees, just given the fact they haven't been updated for many years. I do just want to flag that doesn't necessarily mean that all of, there would be recommendate, it doesn't mean that the, the mayor would necessarily recommend to proceed with increasing all 640, even if the study points to our ability to do that.
Right. So, you know, obviously, it's very concerning as, as we're approaching this year's budget with the, the proposal to even possibly be raising hundreds of new fees at a time when our constituents are, are burdened with increasing utility bills. I know water bills have gone up. They're, all, all utility bills have gone up, their groceries have gone up, and people are just struggling to, to make ends meet more now than, than I've heard in my nine years on the council. And so it is very concerning to hear that, you know, there's a proposal to raise taxes and fees over $25 million on, on our taxpayers and further burden them, when we're seeing here from this hearing with how much money in overtime is being spent and how many vacant positions there are. Given that we are pretty much at the end of the fiscal year, it's right around the corner, and there's already budgeted positions- corner, and there's already budgeted positions from pre, from last year that have not been filled, lots of them, could we use that money to fund this, to close the gap, so that we don't need to raise any taxes and fees on citizens and further burden them this year?
So, I just want to clarify, the budget doesn't include any increases to taxes. It's focused, again, on updating fees that haven't been updated for many years. Certainly, we could look, you know, that generates about $4.5 million of, of revenue between looking at the, the different fees that are, are part of our, our current review. We could certainly look at how to achieve that, the equivalent of that new revenue through expenditure savings, by abolishing some of these positions. What I would say that we would need to ensure is that we couple that with scaling back services where needed. So, you know, we've, we've really talked about why savings in police and fire would, you know, would, you have to, that has to correspond with a, a reduction in service. I think in these other services where we have vacancies, we would also have to, you know, really understand, are they able to achieve true savings? If we're just cutting the pins and re-diverting the money without a corresponding change to service, we could be building in a structural gap into next year's budget.
So, I mean, you brought up like the, the fire department, for instance, and we know one of the main proposals in, is to increase the tax and fees, a fee is a tax. If the government is charging fees to citizens, it's the same thing as a tax. So, these taxes and fees that are being increased, especially on things like ambulance rides, when we're also talking about the shortage of EMS personnel, is, is that being done intentionally to try to drive down the amount of people that utilize that service? Because as we know, healthcare costs are through the roof, and as it is, people, people we all know here, we all have friends and family members, who have deferred going to the doctor, or seeking medical attention because of the, their cost that would be associated with that. And so when we see ambulance rides, fees being raised, that's very concerning to me. I have a, a very strong aging population in my district, and I don't want people, anywhere in the city, seniors or anybody, you know, deferring if they feel like they need medical attention. The, the bill should not be the reason why they don't seek that attention, because a small problem could end up becoming a big problem. So, is that being proposed to be raised to try to reduce the amount of people who are, are calling 911 for EMS transport?
No. And what you see, I mean, what we would like to do is to try to divert non-emergency 911 calls to other more sustainable sources of care. And so that's where you see the investment in 911 diversion, through the, the nurse triage program, and the population health program, to provide additional support to, you know, individuals who are frequent callers of 911, to try to link them up with primary care, to reduce their reliance on the overall system. What we know with the EMS fee in particular is that our fees are, are lower than what are charged by other comparable urban fire departments throughout the country. And so what we're recommending here is to bring, is to increase our fee that hadn't been updated since 2018, in line with some of those other national peers. We also know that the bulk of users of our 911 system for ambulance services are covered by Medicaid and Medicare. This increase will not impact them, or what they pay. They will not see any sort of change. The, the fee increase will largely be, be covered by individuals who use 911, who are covered by private insurance.
Well, that's part of my concern, is that the people who it's going to affect are also people who don't have insurance. There's a lot of people without insurance, because of how expensive it is. And those are the people that are not going to pick up the phone and call 911 when they read in the paper, in two months from now, that EMS costs are going up. They'll either attempt to try to get there on their own, which we know has, has catastrophic effects, because seconds or minutes count when you're having, you know, a medical situation. And so that one is, is very concerning for me. But, but just back to the vacant positions for a second, you know, given that we're, you were seeing that the previous year, the current year, we're in those positions, a lot of that, those unused positions, you're saying that money's already been spent, and, you know, agencies are already utilizing it. Is there any money left over in this year's budget that has gone unspent by agencies? You know, all, or, or is all of this vacant positions that never got filled this past year, has all that money been spent, or is there money left over?
It depends on the, the different, the different agencies, so like, for example...
I'm just overall high, just high level.
High level, I mean, I would say a lot of the other agencies that have significant numbers of vacancies, so that'd be like health, housing, and the library, you know, those agencies collectively have 96 long-term vacancy positions, and each one of those agencies is projected to have a surplus in the current fiscal year.
So what would you say, just overall, you know, general budget across all agencies, what is the projected surplus based on these vacant positions that were not filled over this past fiscal year?
So, the overall expenditure projection for the third quarter has us being over by $37.5 million. Now, embedded in that, some agencies are over, and some agencies are under. And the data that we provided for our third quarter hearing has the, the projections for each one of those agencies. I could resend that.
So, based on those positions, had the agencies not overspent, and just followed their budget, what is the total sum of the positions that were budgeted in this current fiscal year's budget that has not been filled?
I see what you're asking, so you want to see the value...
Like of, of the positions that were budgeted this year, just the approximate dollar amount that never ended up getting filled, and I assume won't be filled in the next month?
Okay.
So like, what's the ballpark figure on that?
I don't have a ballpark in front of me, but I, I have that data that I can, can share as a, a formal follow-up.
But I assume it's consistent with previous years, like we're talking tens of millions of dollars?
Yeah, I mean, rough ballpark, and this is very much of an average, but you can assume about $100,000 per vacant position, when you take into account the salary and the, the OPCs.
So, $100,000 a position, and how many positions are we talking?
In terms of the long-term vacancies in the general fund...
Well, I'm, I'm not just talking about long-term, I'm talking about even, even short-term ones, ones that were in this budget that never got filled. So that could even be short-term, that could be new positions that just never got filled.
So, I would caveat that, because within that less-than-18-month category of vacant positions, there's lots of movement in terms of, you know, the city's roster is changing every day, as folks are coming on board and, and leaving, and so it's really difficult to, to quantify savings from those positions, because anything that's been vacant for less than 18 months, you probably had some level of expenditure for the position in the current fiscal year. So, I would, I could, I could work to quantify the value of the long-term vacancies without the, without the corresponding overages that existed in overtime.
Gotcha, so what, what is our, just like, general vacancy rate right now? Like, how many people are vacant?
Currently, I'm sorry, I have a lot of spreadsheets open. Our vacant, so, da-da-da-da-da, our vacancies are down overall by 12% year-over-year. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact, I can get you the actual rate here in a second.
Okay.
You know, why don't you give me my book? Our current vacancy rate, all funds, is about 19%. That is the, the 2736 that is in the dataset.
How many, how many people is that?
So, in the May vacancy data, across all funds, there were 2,736 vacant positions.
Okay, so, I, I get, you know, a lot of that fluctuates, because some of them are not long-term versus short-term, but if we're just going off the math, you're saying about 100,000 per, per position, that, that comes to, you know, over $200 million. So, you know, needless to say, if we were to just take 10% of the vacant positions now, which I think is a small, a small number, given how long it takes to hire, which we heard about earlier in the hearing, six months, so on and so forth, I think it's very reasonable to say that there will be way more than 10% vacancy going into, of those positions that still won't be hired in 12 months from now. So, can we just take that 10%, which comes out to more than the proposed tax increase, and just not have tax and fee increases this coming year?
I think that if that's the prerogative of the council, there could be an amendment to, but you would have to identify, you know, which agencies there would be the reductions to. I think coupled with that, we, if we are avoiding the additional revenue that we've anticipated in the '26 budget, these would, it would not be eliminating a position for a year, it would be eliminating the position permanently.
Okay, and that, that, that's something that, that could be done. I mean, when we're looking at 10%, I mean, there's, you know, even just starting with the ones that are older than 12 months, 18 months, we're, we're already there. So, so I, I guess the numbers do check out, that if it is the prerogative of the council, we can prevent all the tax and fee increases coming into this year.
You would likely be looking at abolishments in the health department, housing department, and library, to hit that level of savings.
Oh, I could, I could find you 10%, very, I can find you 10% of positions that, that we wouldn't miss, we wouldn't know weren't there. And they're vacant anyways, so, you know, and, and the, the thing is also, when you look at like certain important positions, right, even in agencies that have made tremendous headway, like I, I believe you said to, to my colleague, Councilman Jones, before, about the great progress at DPW, and I applaud the director of DPW, who's really worked extremely hard at fixing one of, one of our largest issues, which is the, the vacancy rate, and like, the Bureau of Solid Waste. But it's not lost on us that the head position, the, the director, the Bureau head of Solid Waste, I mean, that position's been vacant for, isn't it been like three years now?
I don't believe that that has been vacant for, I know that it's been filled since I've been here, and I've not, I've not come up on my three-year anniversary yet.
Okay, I mean, there's, there's an acting director, but I'm saying there hasn't been anybody permanent, and I believe since before you were here.
Okay. I would, yeah, I mean, I, I think the depart, the director of Public Works would, would likely contend that that is a position that they need to have filled in some, some shape or form, and so giving up the funding for that would prevent them from filling it in the future.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not proposing that. No, I'm just saying that there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of people in an acting capacity across the city. I'm not proposing to cut any of that, we need those positions. What I'm saying is that, given that there's so many people in acting, because of the timeline it's taking to fill positions, even very high-paying positions, certainly, I think that we'll have, a lot of these vacancies, hundreds if not thousands of them, that currently exist, will still exist in 13 months from now, after the next, next fiscal year.
And I just want to clarify, there's not thousands in the general fund, like, if we are just looking at vacant positions that have been vacant for more than 18 months, there's 554 that have, in the general fund.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just talking about, I'm talking about current level, like, based on where we are today. I understand that people come, people go, you know, and, and so, we can't predict exactly what that final number is, I'm just going off of where we are today. And hopefully, we're in a better, better position in 12 months from now, but there's a chance that we hire hundreds of new people, but then hundreds of people leave, or, you know, that's just general turnover.
Well, and I, what we've seen, like I said, what we've seen, if we look at this data since July 1st to today, there's been a 10, you know, a 12% decrease in the overall number of vacancies. So we, we have seen that, you know, through some of the modifications that agencies have been making, and the, the focus on this issue, that they've been able to get a number of slots filled and keep them filled.
Yeah, and if they do that again going into the next year, that 12% is another few hundred less than where we are today, so that still puts us at, you know, 2,400 vacant positions, you know, same time next year, even if we continue that trend.
Again, most of the vacant positions, like, when you start to talk about numbers like 2,400, that's where you're getting into account, there's a lot of grant-funded positions that are vacant, that for obvious reasons, agencies are not filling, because they don't know if those grants are going to be here. And the other largest share of vacancies sit in our water and wastewater funds, which DPW can talk about their strategies to reduce the external contract for positions at those, at the, for those enterprise funds.
Gotcha. Well, I appreciate that, and you know, and hopefully, hopefully we make a lot of headway at, at filling those positions in an equitable manner, which, if I can just ask one last question to each, to the HR component?
Last question, yep.
Okay. Can you just briefly, you know, tell me like what, what steps are, or if there are any controls or steps in the budget to focus in on making sure that as we are hiring people, we're doing it in an equitable manner, that we're trying to make sure that the city agencies that reflect the demographic of the residents of Baltimore? Can you, can you talk about if there's anything within how you're monitoring agencies to see that that's happening? Because we know every agency has an equity coordinator, but when I look at the agencies, I would say there's very few, if any, agencies that actually have an equitable workforce that, that reflects the residents of Baltimore.
Sure. So, approximately four years ago, in Workday, we created, it was an equity dashboard, where we can look at the demographics of the agency as they're hiring, as their, the turnover happens, so we can look at those in different categories of positions, we can see the equity in that, so yes, we do monitor that, and we build a dashboard, so as people go in and out, we can see the fluctuation of that.
Oh, that's great. I, I never knew that existed, so, if I can just make one request, if you can just let me know, if you can provide to the committee, whenever's a reasonable amount of time, if there's any agency in the city that has a proportionate amount of their agency reflecting the amount of, of percentage of the Jewish community in Baltimore, if you can find any agency that has even remotely close to the proportionate percentage of residents in the city versus how many people work in that agency?
We don't capture that data.
Oh, what, what demographics do you capture?
We capture sexual orientation, we capture race, we capture, oh, gender. We capture, we can tell what area of the city they live in, we can tell what position they're in, but we don't capture that data specifically.
Okay, interesting. So, I guess if we're looking at area in the city, is, would it be possible to extract, you know, by, by council district, maybe? Because you said what area in the city, is that broken down by council district?
We can, we can do that.
Yeah, so if you can just provide for me, you know, the percentages of my council district that... that, you know, across all the agencies, and if there's, I, I'd just like to see even if there's even 1/14th in any agency that reflects residents of the fifth district? Thank you so much.
Madam Director, approximate timeline for that? Do you need three weeks, four weeks, what's, what's fair?
Yeah, we should be able to do that within two weeks.
Within two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, great. This concludes questions from the council. I, I want to begin by thanking my colleagues, as well as certainly Director Larson. You, welcome to the, to the new, or the interim role, we appreciate it. And I just do want to say, I really appreciate Director Larson. I, I, I think you are one of the better, if not best, budget chairs in the United States of America. I think you do an absolutely phenomenal job and have appreciated your partnership with this council and the data transparency and back and forth. And I also appreciate that, you know, we know that modernizing city government is a priority of Mayor Scott, and that is certainly a priority that this council shares, where it is clear that we need to improve, and really where I see an inflection point for our city is we must not continue to have long-term vacancies that go unfilled for 18 months plus, that is then washed into overtime in agencies, that is then brought to the council to approve supplementals that we did not approve on the front end. I think that is the gist of most of the commentary from this hearing. And it is my hope and belief that together, the council, the administration, your department, and all of our agencies, we can work to improve these practices. I think that the residents of this city deserve nothing less. We all deserve to know that when Chair McCray and you all approve our budget, that that is the budget, and that agencies will be constrained within their budget to a reasonable extent. Again, I want to thank you for your participation in this hearing. I am looking, looking forward to the follow-up. I know we're going to connect after this with Director Stemelis as well on all the committee requests, but really appreciate a truly productive hearing. And with that, this committee is dismissed, thank you.